We are not going to adopt any ordinance in regards to the golf carts tonight until we get a town marshal. And we have someone that is working on it.
That answers my question?
An answer your question, go home now.
The next question is what's the money for that?
If it comes with a seatbelt, you gotta use it. Don't come without a seatbelt, you're gonna end up using it. You can use your arm, that's right, in daytime. Can't do that at night. But you have to vote that for 30 minutes.
They shouldn't be out at night, they don't have turn signals.
But, yeah. Tell them all that.
Man, just where's the money for a town marshal gonna come to?
We're gonna come up with it.
Plant a tree out here that grows money or something?
In my backyard. We're gonna come up with it.
Well, I'm gonna come up and get a few branches and start some of that.
Everybody move the minute? Ready? Make the motion to the first minute of September 10th?
All in favor?
All in favor? Approval of the September 24th bill is today.
September 24th bills?
On second, all in favor? Water update?
Going good.
And the water tower rehab bill and certification of completion.
Guess I've got the bill for the water tower rehab about 4,500 to go down. There's a place there we need to sign as the owner. I don't know if I have to put that into form of a motion or not, but it's already approved or anything, we're just agreeing to pay the... I feel we called the, uh... ARCA money, not ARCA, the American Recovery Act money was gonna be spent for that, so that's 153,000 of the 190, maybe some thousand will come from that.
B and C invoices?
Yes, I received that probably about 30 minutes ago. And that's a payment for the work on the water mains and stuff. Have you got, you should have a copy of it in your... Marines, I don't wanna got a copy of it at the time. Yes, and that also requires your signature on that for completion.
Actual payment number is 503,000, 411, March 36th.
Well, those are, uh... The total bill is 826,820 dollars and 92 cents. You can't get me in that.
I don't have you in there.
What, what, what?
Ready for me?
Ready for you.
Did you hear me back there?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
The reason I'm here tonight, uh, is that I've sold Gossport Manufacturing Company. We've been in business 80 years this year, the Gossport. And I'm 91 years old next month. And I can't belong forever, we gotta keep the place going. We sold it to a wonderful firm, firm. And it's run by a gentleman that's here tonight, I want you to see him and be introduced to him. His name is Ron Neusthal. Ron, would you stand?
Yes, Mr. King. It's an honor to be here. I've known of Joe King. I've been in business for, since I got out of college, working for my dad, and it's much smaller company than we are today in Philadelphia. But I knew of Hoosier Tarp and Gossport Manufacturing since I was a young man, and we used to compete with them. Our business in Philadelphia is a family-owned business. No longer in the weeds, but my three children, God bless, they're all, all get along, and they all work for the company. So the business will continue. And when I was approached by hearing that Gossport was for sale, I was very interested, as I told Joe maybe 15 years ago, should he ever wish to retire. And in Joe and his relationship to the sale of Gossport, he said, "Well, listen, if you wanna buy the business, you gotta, there's one thing that has to happen, and that's the business stays in Gossport." So I said, "Well, that's no problem." So we, uh, before we signed the papers, my son and our team came out to Gossport, met Susan and Brad, and the employees who worked at Gossport Manufacturing, and we were impressed with all of them. We thought they were really good people, so, uh, our goal is to continue the business. I'm in my late 70s myself, but I've been, uh... It's my job to get things running and to make some improvements, invest some money in Gossport Manufacturing, and we're already starting to do that. We've only owned the company for three months and four days, so it's gonna take some time for us to get equipment and other things that we need to do to grow the business. It is our hope that Gossport Manufacturing, the legacy that we're taking over from Joe, will continue to grow. It will continue to grow employee, employment for people in this area, and Gossport proper, of course. And I'm just happy to be here. I love small-town life, and I, I think you should appreciate what a wonderful place it is that you live in. And I hope to see you again, hope to see all of you again, meet all of you again. If you call Susan or Brad, they have my cell phone number, and we will support the town of Gossport, as Joe has supported the town of Gossport. And there'll be no changes as far as I'm concerned. We hope to grow with Gossport Manufacturing. By the way, the name of our company is Humphreys in Philadelphia, and they'll probably be, like we had to do some legal stuff with setting up Humphreys of Indiana and stuff like that, so that we could operate the business here. But we're excited to be here. We think it's a great opportunity and a great opportunity for growth, and I appreciate Joe. You should know that in the cannabis industry, Joe's reputation is not 10, it's probably like 15. He's a straight shooter, has always been, and we will continue to honor his legacy in operating Gossport Manufacturing. So I thank all of you and appreciate your listening to me, and if there's any reason you have any questions or complaints, hopefully not, we got Gossport Manufacturing. Susan and Brad can certainly pass them on to me. I'm not that far away in Philadelphia. Well, with technology today and Zooming and all that stuff, like Susan, Brad and I had a Zoom meeting twice in the last week, so... I know what's going on here, and we're just very, very happy to be part of Gossport today, so thank you all.
We turned his back over, he goes to the name of Boots.
Yes, Boots is...
We're out at these, uh, Edwalls, right, are your...
Well, my grandfather on my mother's side, I was born right after the war, '46. And my grandfather had predeceased, maybe he died, I think, in '36. And his name was Rudolph, and Rudolph into the Second World War is a very German-sounding name. So my mother and grandmother nicked that, and so I became Ronald, and he was the youngest of Ronald children. And in the German family, apparently the nickname, he was the baby of the family, and the nickname for baby was Boots. So everybody called him Boots as baby, but then it became Boots, and that's my given little name.
I liked it, I liked the introduction to the town board members.
Yes, I, I, there's, I know Millie, Michael.
Ernie.
Ernest, pleasure to meet, pleasure to meet all of you.
Nice meeting you.
And who else?
Donnie Aldrich.
And the lawyer here at the end, I hope we don't have to talk.
Don't do that.
Right here.
Use the work. So, I mean, I don't come in that often. I happen to be here today, I'm going home tomorrow. I still work in Philadelphia. I'm still active, I go to work, I just don't have to get in at 8 o'clock anymore. I get in at 10-ish, and I leave at 5, because I don't play golf and I don't garden, so I'm bored stiff if I don't go to work. And as long as my health hangs out, I'll, I'll continue to work, and I'll be continuing to come to Gossport, I'll probably be here late October.
Susan Bowles, our general manager at Gossport, here's Susan here, and Brad King, who's also, well, he's a sales manager. So that's all I got, I'm done.
Well, he's got my money, I can tell you that.
Thank you, town board.
Alright, we're gonna take a recess for the budget adoption. Can I get a motion, I want a motion, give a second.
Second.
All in favor? This is the adoption for the budget. General fund, 235,703 dollars. Adopted tax levy, 98,960. Adopted tax rate, .5321. Local road and street, 10,550. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Motor vehicle highway, 106,236 dollars. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Cigarette tax, 3,500 dollars. Adopted tax, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. The adopted budget is 355,989 dollars. The adopted tax levy is 98,960 dollars, and the adopted tax rate is .5321. How are you feeling on that, sorry?
Well, somebody, somebody should be approving that.
Make sense to the chief of budget?
Just maybe it's a second, I'll say.
All in favor?
Make sure you mark on the height of your name.
Okay, sewer update?
Got a lot of foam, hopefully.
Make a motion to return to the regular meetings? All in favor? Sewer update?
Get a lot of foam, but she's taking care of it as it comes, so...
Streets update?
Well, they're making more new holes in the streets. And anybody that's on the road is being worked on, is getting their mains hooked up, flush your water out through the garden hose or something, don't flush through your house. Plug it up.
You got the community cross there? Change order in completion? Is that it?
No.
Milestone?
Milestone. Thank you all.
Thank you. Welcome to Gossport. This is for the community vote, change order in completion. The original contract price was 133,682 dollars. Contract price prior to this change order, 133,682 dollars. Decrease of this change order, 16,484 dollars and 20 cents. Contract price incorporating this change order, 117,197 dollars and 86.
I think you probably need a motion to approve the change order.
Motion to approve the change order?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Fire update?
We have a house fire today, Tim. Old Valley used a couple of jugs, um, didn't replace them with removers, but we shouldn't bill for that. Other than that, I think they're pretty good.
Alright, uh, we're in Old Valley, entered from the hydrant this last time, they've got trucks of stuff out of the hydrant. Stuff.
Is that new hydrant or an old hydrant?
Old hydrant. Which has a lot of stuff came through our pumps today.
They just dug up the street right there, too. So, to let you know.
We used a lot of water, we probably used, I'm gonna say 70 to 80,000 gallons of water today.
Okay, probably screened to your pumps, like caps and solids?
Yeah.
Okay.
The hydrants, when they get down to putting all these new taps and stuff in, the hydrants need to be flushed again, because every time they go into the new main, there's a little piece of the plastic, it gets into the...
Yeah, Donnie found a piece of plastic in ours.
It's real small, but they filled the screen and the nozzle hole, so...
Yeah.
And I wanna thank Old Valley, being by some for helping us today, for your work, all good.
Just to let you guys know, I'll be out of town starting Friday, I won't be back in town until October 11th or 12th. I'm going out of town to work. But yes, I'm going to another concert.
I don't see you giving us tickets to go to concerts.
Isn't anybody special for Susan's compliment?
Okay, we got old business. We have a personnel policy that we took between tariffs, the old one, one one that drew up, and I think we came up with a new personnel policy. Did you guys get a chance to read it? Maybe we talked about the other.
I think it was about five changes that you put in.
Yeah.
This is the one we changed, correct?
Yeah.
We're gonna, no, it's okay.
Make a motion to pass it?
Yeah, second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And tabled golf cart?
The what?
The golf carts.
What about always that? Tabled?
We did.
Well, get back to your original problem, why, you know whose kids are, and you know who their parents are, perhaps talking to them, they'll say...
They've handled it.
Just like these kids that shoot people, now the parents are going for them, you gotta take it back to where you started.
The parents have handled it.
Okay.
There's that. Okay, new business?
Me, Wanda, us been talking, from now on, we'll have Scott doing all the ordering for stuff, that way we won't get everything mixed up and stuff. And Scott will go get them. Like I talk to him and stuff, I talk to Tori and Scott both, and anything they use off the shelf, make sure they put it, get it replaced at the same time, and stuff, because... It, the pain in the neck, they have to go chase stuff down and get a leak. And I told them some of the stuff they need, that needs to be on the shelf, we need to use to get with Donnie and Wanda, before they order it. Bring, though.
Brings me to a request. We need a storage building for these parts and valves and stuff.
He's talking about storage building, they're gonna tear that old water plant down, why couldn't they just take the tanks out of the tank, that, that building, and leave that building there and put a new roof on it and use it for a storage building? It could save some money from them tearing it down and stuff, and I'll, I'll get it kicked back.
Tanks removed.
Aye.
How are we gonna get the tanks?
They, they're supposed to remove everything, if they, we'll remove the tanks and leave the building.
It's not an idea, is it's a structure, or can you store stuff in?
Graves told me the tanks would come out the top.
Yeah, and just have a hole there, all you need to do is put some metal and stuff back over the top of it, be a good storage set, it's a, be a dirty shame to just tear it down when we can store stuff in it. And then it'll cost us to have it torn down, so...
Tell them not to tear it down.
In your process meetings, in your process meetings, when you have them, the next one, just talk to them and tell them what you guys want to do, and he'll probably explain everything to you.
Okay. Things moving?
Is the...
You have the floor?
Uh, you, you tabled my subject? I, I did have a few words I would like to apply to it, though, it seems like you did table it. My question will be, oh, do we fall under Spencer rule now? Are we just following under our old ordinance that you had? Seems how that is kinda like...
There isn't ordinance in place, it's the old one.
Correct.
And Jan gave me a copy of it, so I'm...
Right, I have a, a copy as well, uh, I, that's why I was asking if we, uh...
Until we can come up with...
And that's fair, totally, I get that, so it makes all these points moot. But, yeah, that's, I guess that would be a big question, if we're tabling that, whose rule do we follow that way? If we can stop, say, if I wanna take Kevin to school in the morning...
Make two separate ones?
They, I'd be like, we're so good, so... How fast can I really freaking go in here? Driving at night, he picking her up, the kids loving, you know, why not motivate a little bit more with the game? And it's just literally harmless fun. That's the, that's the bottom line on the whole golf cart issue, it's, they don't go fast, they don't come with seatbelts, so to require them, I feel is, um, a kind of a violation of a right, maybe, or, you know... I have a side-by-side, they do fall under state law, I have it fully licensed, insured, everything that needs to be, and for rights, you know, that thing is fast, it's dangerous, you know, it's more dangerous than a car, if you ask me, so... I drive with respect when I'm in a respectful place, and when you take me to the places where they're supposed to be driven like that, that's where you drive like that, so, every place has a, uh, place for those. And the road is really the place for golf carts, that's what they're done on golf courses, is what they do in golf communities, I've been in the villages in Florida, that, that's one of the main transportations. I grew up in London for a little while, that was a big transportation item there as well, four doors, you know, ATVs. It's all about, you know, just respect and what you're doing. Thank you for, uh, the time.
Eric?
Well, since we're not gonna cover this ordinance tonight, I, I don't need to talk. I was, I was gonna complain, but there's no complaint now. You're applying next week, I was writing next week.
Maybe you can explain after that.
Could be, whenever.
Is there a Kylie or Nicholas Freeman here?
She called, said she, like, they'll get all worker in at the meeting, and I told her that, since she wrote up, might have to bring it up.
Should I read this again? They live on 11th East South Street. The house and property of 9 South Fourth Street is located behind our house. The only thing separating our backyard is our privacy fence. This house and property has been abandoned and increasingly deteriorating for years. There is overgrowth coming over our fence and into our backyard. This overgrowth includes poison ivy and elderberry trees. I am extremely allergic to poison ivy, as well as my husband. We have a three-year-old and two dogs. Elderberry is extremely toxic to dogs and humans due to its, it containing the compound cyanide. We have also seen skunks enter our backyard from the overgrown property. Our dogs have killed two groundhogs that have dug under our fence from the property at 9 South Fourth Street. We are now noticing mice as well as the influx of insects, the insects living in the overgrowth has made it nearly impossible for us to sit on our porch. has made it nearly impossible for us to sit on our porch. My family's health is being put at risk due to this property. We really would like to install a new fence, but with the conditions, and it was cut off.
That makes it nearly impossible.
Yeah. But with these conditions, it makes it nearly impossible.
How about if I find out who's record under the property and contact them? Tell them they're gonna be cleared up.
It's my children.
Pardon me?
That's my house that they're talking about, on nine South Fourth Street.
Okay.
But my children own it. And it's so, it's Garnet Osapple and Calvin Osapple. That who, and they have been working there, but with them working, you know, jobs too, so. It will eventually be tore down.
Well, I guess the question is, are they gonna be able to clean up the vegetation off there?
Well, I'll have to start to talk to them. I know they worked one day back there, but I didn't know how much was, how bad it was.
Now, the insurance, old house that they're talking about, that was a bird sanctuary at one time, but-
It might be.
Yep. And the vegetation could be cut. But at one time, may not be now, I don't know.
Yeah.
They have to go through D and R. I guess I'd have about that. Because I know it was. That's all I get for being old. Remembering a little bit.
Okay. Is that it?
All right, so we had this fire today down there on South Street. Um, I don't know how long they're going to be giving the cleanup or what.
Was that where he's at right now?
He's running around here somewhere. Seven. Trying to locate, I'll probably see sometime tonight or before. Um, so we got five, that went up on Seventh Street.
Yeah. It's gonna be tore down.
Sometimes Garnet comes to the office.
On the day, it's a big, it's a big eyesore.
Wanda just said sometimes he comes to the office.
And just sits there just to rest.
Well, what made that difficult today was a massive amount of junk.
I had to take a backhoe up there.
Yeah, yeah, take a backhoe up and dig through it.
So you guys might look into both of them places now.
Yeah.
Mary, just to give the board a heads up. I had a phone call Monday night or Sunday afternoon about the water line running out north of town. I guess the house, Stan Smith's old house on the corner.
Yeah.
I guess they don't have water. And they were asking, I said, I know that they were working on it out there. I don't know if they've got a shut-off valve. But I know that they said that they didn't have water. I jumped in the contact board, so I just want to see if they have or not, but just to give you a heads up. I was contacting them, I guess they have no water out there.
Nobody contacted us?
I haven't received any phone calls.
Nobody's coming on?
Turned back on?
I don't know.
Just give you a heads up.
Do you know who is?
Uh, Medley has been last name.
Well, I shut the water off today going out Smith Road so they can fix it, but I haven't heard back from anybody.
It may have been because they had a park fixing or something. They worked on it Friday out there. So I know the last big effort going down.
I came by, he turned the water back on himself Friday. I don't know about now, it's off, it was off today when I left.
Well, we're on the water subject. Out there by the top plant plant, we got that dug up, we found the shut-off valve. We're putting a new shut-off valve there. And they, the leak right there at the ninety, I told Scott, I said, we're right there, let's fix it for them. We gotta cut the piping out to put the shut-off valve and stuff. We're gonna take a piece of a six-inch pipe for a sleeve, just flat off to a down and shut it right, one off. So. Jason Trader, they're all done.
Yeah.
It's all took care of, I think. All you gotta do is see installing it.
Okay.
At the grave state.
Yeah.
It's open, so. There's a door through here.
Anything else?
I'd like to do these interviews at the town hall, because I'll turn people flying to Main Street.
As soon as I can.
So are you still taking applications?
We have someone in mind right now, but you got somebody-
So that's not, that's enough?
Do what? No. No, if you have somebody in mind, let me know.
Do you have to post it? Without?
I don't think so.
My question is, do, would you, you like full-time or?
No, we can't afford full-time, we can't, we can't hard time, we can't, what?
I don't know, it's definitely cleaned up.
Oh, yeah.
Especially not over there. We're not like others.
I can still work for you, what?
Yeah, they might want to go sometime from the dad's house.
We have a little nice playground, but when the kids go down to play on it, they've got a notch for the dog pile down.
Yes.
And when they mow, I think last time they mowed, there was like eleven, thirteen piles of dog crap.
Yeah.
They need to get on that, people, take their dogs down to the park and get in the park.
Charge a penalty, are you a marshal?
No.
Yeah.
Are there signs up, Ronnie?
Huh?
Are there signs up?
Yeah.
Are in the park?
Oh, thank you.
Metal?
For golf food?
I don't think so.
Can we like install like a dog poop bag down there?
Well, that's what I was getting ready to say. I went to my vet the other day and they have one in front of their building with a sign. It says, please pick up your dog's poop with the bags and a little trash can.
Might be to pick up a couple of vans, put them-
If it was me, I put a sign up there and say, kid's playground is a no poop area. Bring your dogs there to do damage.
I like that.